Calling to order, the March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The city clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Sotell.
Here.
Councilmember Wessie.
Here.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Patel is absent. Councilmember Heim.
Here.
Councilmember Luther.
Here.
Councilmember Norris.
Here.
Councilmember Hood.
Here.
We have seven out of eight council members here tonight. Next item on the agenda is D, Agenda Approval. Motion for Agenda Approval?
So moved.
Second.
Approve, Agenda Approval was motioned by Councilmember Luther and seconded by Councilmember Sotell. Any changes? Oops. Councilmember Grimmer.
Yes, in behalf of my co-council Patel, Councilwoman Patel, I would like to table Bill Number sixty-four-ten.
Is that a motion? Did he make a motion?
Pardon me?
Yeah. Did you make a motion?
Yes, I would, motion to table Bill sixty-four-ten.
Second.
That was first. Motion's made by Councilmember Grimmer, seconded by Councilmember Luther to table Bill Number sixty-four-ten on the, tonight's agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
There is six ayes and one nay. The bill is tabled on tonight's agenda. Next item, E, Public Comments. We have one this evening, it looks like. Mrs. Patricia Bland, please come forward.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to be here today on behalf of the Committee for Bridgeton Charter Amendments to give our thank you for holding the Town Hall informational meeting, which was held on this past Monday, March eighteenth, at the Rex Center. We had over a hundred people in attendance, and every single one of the council members also were in attendance, so I thought that was a really great showing for our city. Just wanted to kind of give a little recap of what went on there in case any of the public is listening today. We held that informational meeting just to get word out. I think the city was trying to make sure people had access to information on these amendments. I am so thankful that our attorney from the commission, John Young, was there. He kind of gave a breakdown of how those amendments came to be and the amount of work and process that went into that, which if you don't know, was ten full months, bi-monthly meetings of the Charter Review Commission, for hours. It weren't a short meeting, they were long meetings where we went through every single word of that charter. So I appreciate him being there. I also appreciate Judge LaRue was there to give his opinion as a citizen of Bridgeton as to some of these amendments, particularly the proposed amendment with respect to the election of the judge, to switch that to an appointment. I think that one is very important amendment for our city. There's a very, very small pool of lawyers that are available to sit in that seat, myself included, as one of those potential people. So I think that that would be a great amendment that our city could go forward with. We had several handouts available for our citizens. The, we ran out of handouts, they took them all. So I just thought it was a really great discussion and an opportunity for our public to let their voices be heard as well. I think we had over ten peoples stand up and give their opinion on either side of the coin. So it was just really great to have that opportunity for the citizens themselves to be heard. So I just wanted to come up and give my thanks and say vote yes on all of the propositions. Thank you very much. Oh, yeah, and one last thing. Thanks, Nancy. That meeting on Monday was recorded and will be on YouTube and will be a link on the city's website. So if you didn't get a chance to be there on Monday, you can re-watch it. So, is there already? Fantastic.
Thank you, Mrs. Bland. Next item on the agenda is approval of the amendments. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Hood, seconded by Councilmember Norris, to approve the minutes from the March sixth council meeting. Any changes, suggestions, friendly amendments? Councilmember Sotell?
Yes, thank you, Randy. I guess, Mr. Heim. Anyway, I think there should be something in here on the minutes. I saw that there was a resolution supposedly passed by Acting Mayor Randy Heim at March sixth's meeting that says the council was voted on it. You have it posted on your, on your site. I don't know whether we just automatically accept these or not. I was kind of wanting to get an input from our city attorney. There's a resolution that was for Catherine Groff, I guess, hundredth birthday, that you posted that we passed. And I don't see that is, and it says we voted on this as a resolution, so I don't know if that's something that's supposed to be done after the fact, before the fact, or if it's a proclamation that's not appropriate. So I was wondering if that needs to be added to the minutes. I'm for the proclamation, I'm not against the proclamation. But if the, if the acting mayor created a proclamation that we did not vote on, is that a legal process? I'm asking our city attorney this, and does it need to be added to the minutes? Because it says it was, but we, I don't remember voting, and I haven't missed a meeting since before oh-nine.
Yeah, so, sorry.
Can you give us the line number first, please?
Line number of your proclamation?
No, no, of the minutes.
He's saying it's not.
It's not in the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Is what I'm saying. It's not in the minutes, and it was also not in, in the agenda from last meeting. It wasn't in the agenda from last meeting, so I guess that's why it's not either way.
So.
Here's a copy of it, if you'd like to read it, see what it says, mayor.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary. The, I think we're mixing a couple different terms. Resolution and proclamation. Resolution requires a vote at a meeting. But, and I'm not familiar with this, but based on what you've just said, I think it's a proclamation?
It does say proclamation, but it says we voted on it, and I don't.
Well, yeah, so there, there's, I can't speak to what's on some other website, if that may or may not be accurate, I don't know. I do know that there was no resolution passed at the last meeting.
Looks like it was signed by our city clerk, Karen Robinson, though.
So a proclamation can be issued by the mayor, or in this case, the acting mayor, with no action by the council.
Okay.
Because proclamation is the act of the mayor only, or in this case, the, the acting mayor. So.
So it's kind of like an executive order?
Yeah, it's, or, and it's really, it has no, it has no, there's nothing behind it. It's the mayor making a proclamation. You know, I don't know, I assume, is it some sort of day that was called?
Well, yeah, it said, it said March sixth, you know, and so, which means it's the council meeting, and that, and that's, you know, the council, you know, and the acting mayor, you know. I'm just, I'm just bringing it up because we've, we've had these before, like for somebody attaining an Eagle Scout, say for instance, okay?
Right.
And it is something we vote on, and I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm not against it, I'm for it. But it's like, should we have voted on, or do we need to add that to our agenda and, and after the fact still vote on it?
No, we've done those at meetings before. I, I absolutely agree with that. And I think probably, I'm only familiar with proclamations being issued at meetings, but I've never really understood why there's any vote on it. You know, it's, I, there's, it's been fine. I've never stopped a vote on it because it doesn't mean anything, but, but it doesn't have to be voted on because it's the mayor's action.
Okay. But then it should say like, like an executive order proclamation instead of saying.
Well, it's, I mean, proclamation is fine. Again, I think we need to distinguish between a proclamation, which in this case is, it's just the mayor's proclamation, and an action of the council, which is either a resolution or an ordinance.
Well, I'm bringing it up as a learning curve at the same time.
Yes, sir. No, I think it's a fair question.
Because I'm in favor of what the issue is, but I think we, I'm thinking that we maybe missed a, a step that we should have probably taken.
I, I think it's, I think it's fine, the way it is.
Then I'll leave it alone then. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Any further changes, comments, friendly amendments? I see none. All in favor of the approval of the amendments? Say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Your minutes have been approved for March the sixth. Thank you. I have one appointment this evening. It was on the dais in front of you, and it's for the Board of Adjustment. I'd like a motion to approve Mrs. Nancy Lepia, Ward One, to the Board of Adjustment. She recently served on the Police Commission, and now we're asking her to serve on the Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is made by Councilmember Sotell, seconded by Councilmember Wessie. All in favor?
I think there's discussion.
Okay, discussion. All right. Mr. Grimmer?
Okay, I really didn't, wasn't going to go, but I, I think this, this would be a very, very fine appointment. Mrs. Lepia is very, very up on, on city matters, and I think that, again, she would enhance that committee's business. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris?
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Lepia is an informed resident. She has been a citizen of Bridgeton for many years. I have served with her, and she's always investigates and is prepared. And it is my honor to vote for Mrs. Lepia for Board of Adjustment.
Thank you. Councilmember Sotell?
Yes, thank you, Randy. I did talk to Nancy Lepia about this previously, last couple days on this here, and I'd like to see that it actually does go through. I think it's an excellent, you know, choice for, you know, for her to fill in, and I, I think she'll do an excellent job. That's why I made sure that, you know, from Ward One, that Ward One was the ones nominating and seconding it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Luther?
Yes, I serve as the ex officio member on the Board of Adjustment, and I want to say welcome. We look forward to, I look forward to working with you.
Looks like favorable comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Welcome aboard, Mrs. Lepia. Thank you. Next item, H, we have no resolutions this evening, so we'll move on to aye, and we'll recess for public hearings. Twenty-four dash PZ dash zero-two. Mr. Grayden?
Thank you, Mr. Heim. Application twenty-four dash PZ dash O-two, this is an application for a zoning text amendment. The applicant has requested to amend the B-two Community Business District regulations to allow micro-business wholesale facility as a permitted use with a special use permit. The applicant is proposing to operate a micro-business wholesale facility at one-two-one-five-eight Natural Bridge Road, or I should say pursue a special use permit for that location if this is to be approved. Keep in mind, though, this is a request that applies to the entire B-two Business District. This went to the Planning Commission at their February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of seven in favor to four opposed. Some of this will seem familiar to you all. This request, very similar request came before. Planning Commission last December and City Council in January. At the time, the applicant was requesting to add micro-business wholesale facility to the B-two Community Business District as a permitted use. Planning Commission recommended in opposition. They came and had the public hearing at City Council. Based on some of the feedback, the applicant withdrew their application and then pursued the request, but now requesting that it be added to the B-two as a special use rather than permitted use. A little bit of background on the B-two Community Business District. There's two main areas of the B-two District, approximately two hundred parcels. You can see the areas highlighted in yellow. A large area on the upper left-hand side, including properties along St. Charles Rock Road, McKelvey and Natural Bridge Road, and then further east on Lindbergh Boulevard with, with a few other pockets of B-two zoned property. The B-two District permits retail office, restaurant, financial institution, uses similar to those. With special use permit, it allows auto repair facilities, gas station, medical clinic, or a few of the special uses. The purpose, as stated in the zoning ordinance of the B-two District, is to prevent uses which provide goods and services for consumption by the non-commercial public. A little bit of background on marijuana micro-business facility regulations. These were recently amended in the zoning ordinance last fall, and when we went through that process, we added micro-business wholesale facilities as permitted in the B-four, M-one, M-two, and a few M-three planned manufacturing districts as permitted with a special use permit in those districts. When staff reviewed and analyzed how to permit these types of, of uses, along with the city attorney's office, so we determined that these districts were the ones that were suitable for micro-business wholesale facilities, and that's why they were added there. Micro-business wholesale facilities allow for cultivation, processing, manufacturing, packaging, storage, transportation of marijuana. In staff's opinion, it's not compatible with the intent and purpose of the B-two District, which is why we didn't include it when we amended those districts last year. I do have, this is the full definition of marijuana micro-business facility in our ordinance, if we do need to refer to that at all at any point. And then this would be the proposed amendment, is adding it to the B-two as a special use. This is what the applicant has requested. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Councilmember Grimmer?
Zach, I, in looking at the, our staff and staff's recommendation on zoning, I'm going to infer that the logic behind that was to separate this business from any type of, of proximity to a residence.
That was a component of it. When we reviewed, and I'm going to go back to when we added and addressed micro-business facilities, there's two types of micro-business facilities. Micro-business dispensary facility and micro-business wholesale facility. The dispensary facilities, similar to comprehensive marijuana dispensary, those are point-of-sale, more of a retail operation. So those were added to the B-two as permitted with a special use permit. But then when we took a look at the definition, definition of the marijuana micro-business wholesale facility, it's, it's a different operation than the dispensary. It does function, well, for example, in our wholesale business in general are only permitted in the B-four, M-one, M-two, and M-three districts. So that was kind of our approach as well. Correct. A lot of our B-two districts are adjacent and in close proximity to residential, so that was a component, as well as the, just the concept of a wholesale business.
Thank you.
Next, Councilmember Hood?
Yes, do you know if the security measures required by the state would follow for that particular business in the B-two District?
Yes. So the, the state, the state has a very stringent licensing process for any type of marijuana cannabis business, dispensaries, wholesale, et cetera. Micro businesses are subject to those stringent licensing and, including the security measures, yes.
If, if this was to be allowed, would it, would it make sense later on for them to come back and ask for just, for the ability to sell the product in the B-two District as well?
If, if this were to be, and this might be a question that's better for the applicant, but if they were to pursue the dispensary component, that's already allowed in the B-two District with a special use permit. I don't know that the state, though, allows both of them at the same location. I don't know if they allow that. The applicant might know that. To my knowledge, I don't think they do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Luther?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Heim. So, thank you, Zach, for that. I did have the, the opportunity to look through the notes, the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Board, and I did wanted to say that while I understand the convenience, I understand the rationale for this request and the convenience to the applicant. I think on the other side of that, given that this is a text amendment, we need to think about, there has to be a net positive for Bridgeton out of this. And because I don't necessarily see it down the line, or understand what the implications would be to make an exception, a text amendment for one organization, one company, what that would do to Bridgeton or how that would position us in the long run, I do agree with your, your conclusion that the micro-business wholesale facilities in B-two Community Business District does not meet the intent and purpose of that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Norris?
Yes, I just want to repeat that, that most, much of these B-two back up to, are surrounded by residential in many of those.
Correct.
You know, would this be considered spot zoning?
No, I don't think it would be considered spot zoning, because it's a text amendment to, I think spot zoning typically applies more to when someone applies for a rezoning, and our city attorney can jump in if he thinks he needs to, but typically that would apply to if someone's requesting a certain property or a group of properties be rezoned to something that's out of character in that part of the city. As opposed to text amendment, then we analyze, is this land use appropriate in this district or not? So not necessarily a spot zoning issue, but good, good question, yeah.
Well, I have one more, and we do have an area that they could do their business.
Correct. Or referencing some of what I mentioned here, yes, when we, when we amended the zoning last year for these, we chose the, these, B-four, M-one, M-two, M-three, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Zach, do you have a slide that shows the exact location of that business, of the proposed, of that business?
I do not, but if you look at the top left hand of that map, where it says Natural Bridge Road, directly under the RD, the road of Natural Bridge, that's the parcel, it's zoned B-two.
Okay.
That's the parcel that they're looking to move their business, but of course, all the areas highlighted in yellow are zoned B-two, but it's directly under that RD in Natural Bridge Road.
And that is surrounded by the apartment complex?
Yeah, that's surrounded by R-six zoning, a multifamily residential.
I'd like to recognize the city attorney.
Yes, so I do, and Zach, you mentioned it. I mean, this, this text change would apply to all B-two districts. And I understand that this applicant may have an interest in a particular property in one B-two District, but we really shouldn't be focused on that property in this context. Now ultimately, if the council were to pass this text change, and then the applicant were to come back and apply for a special use permit, then it would be appropriate to focus on the particular address at which the applicant is seeking to open their business. Thank you.
Councilmember Sotell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Heim. Looking at the map here, I mean, that Lindbergh corridor that backs up basically includes basically all of Ward One, and you look at all the other areas right here, we, it's where everybody does a lot of their local retail shopping, and a lot of these do touch a lot of residential areas. And I don't think this is appropriate at all. I think when we passed this a year ago, that, you know, we chose the, the B-three and the other M-ones, the other M-one, two and threes, you know, so that there was a place for wholesale, okay? There, there's no need for this type of business to be in a retail location because they're wholesale only. We've allowed the other locations to be there, and I think those will also be, you know, well-regulated by the state, and this one would too, but I can't picture this even being anything that'd be beneficial for the city of Bridgeton. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from council? Whoa. Councilmember Wessie?
Zach, I believe you ended up saying that there were a few people that voted against it. Correct. When this went to Planning Commission in February, there were seven in favor and four opposed. Do you remember from that meeting what the four opposed, did they give any reasoning to being opposed? They did not specify a reason, and there were mul, unless it goes back to when it first was requested as a permitted use, there were some that were opposed as well, but they did not provide a reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grayden.
Thanks.
Would the petitioner like to come forward and speak? Please state your name and address so the city clerk can write it down.
Yeah, I'm John Berchem from Farmington, Missouri, one-one-four Southwestwood Drive in Farmington. So I come here today before you to, to request the amendment for the B-two District. Our, our understanding of how this went down was, we applied for the license with the state of Missouri. Before there was any zoning for micro-business, there was no zoning for it in the city of Bridgeton. We applied at this certain location on Natural Bridge Road because we had an existing relationship with Dr. Pata, who owns the, the strip there. So, in essence, we, we came to you guys to, to bring forth this, this amendment originally. We realized that we did not need to change the entire district. We wanted to have the ability to come to you and request a special use permit. That's what we're doing. We have to get approval from the city in order to operate under the special use permit. So, basically, we, we were zoned out whenever the city decided to come together as micro-business, where we were zoned out of this location. But we come to you to try and operate a facility that we were awarded by the state. If we do not get this location, we have to apply to amend our, our business license and move to a different area. We want to do business in the city. We want to bring tax revenue to the city. We are not trying to do anything nefarious here. We are just trying to operate a business that has been granted by the state of Missouri. Now, security is something that was brought up in the zoning testimony. We are required by the state, and let me quote here, under Section F, we are required to have security requirements, including lighting, physical security, alarm requirements, and requirements for securely transporting marijuana between marijuana facilities. So, micro-business can only operate with micro-business licenses. So wholesale facilities can only sell to dispensary locations that are micro-business based. It's not comprehensive. We can only deal with the micro-business. We will have twenty-four hour security after, after hours. There is going to be a security presence there. We will have lighting to make sure that this is very secure and well-lit. We'll have an extra HVAC system so that the other tenants are not going to smell anything. That's completely segregated. We're not going to have any problems with the, with the smell. I think I've answered the questions on security. Are there any other questions, particularly to? Okay. Are there any other questions regarding how we are going to operate or? Because I, I don't want, I don't want to come to the next meeting and have a bunch of questions because we want to work this out as, with you guys to make sure that we're able to operate.
Councilmember Sotell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Heim. I know that this area that you happen to show on the map is, you know, is currently B-two, and you saw how many other, other areas are B-two. Why haven't you just applied to have that particular property changed to B-three zoning instead? So it matches the other one, and it's already approved. That might have an easier process. But when we take a look at this map of how it's going to affect all the other B-two areas, you can see the majority of us don't want it in all these other areas. That's my question to you.
I, I understand that, but it is a special use, so even if it's allowed, there's not going to be any, any more wholesale facilities. There's only allowed four in the district, and the odds of another one in the city of Bridgeton are slim, slim to none. You're not going to have another person apply, more than likely, in the city of Bridgeton for a wholesale facility if there's one that's already been awarded.
If we would change the zoning and you decide to move or somebody else, you switched over and they wanted a different location, and the whole, all that B-two was zoned that, that means they could easily just come in and say, hey, I want to just change, I want to move over here. I need more. to move over here, I need more exposure.
Correct.
Right now, I understand this center right there, it's, it's ver-, it's not used very much, and it's not much of a retail, it's in a pocket, but it is wrapped around a lot of, has a lot of condos and apartments that wrap around, so there's a lot of residential people. I think applying, make it change to B three, and then have, let, let those citizens come and speak, whether they want that, and they're, if they're, as their next-door neighbor, is the appropriate thing, or the tenants that are currently in that particular building as well.
Yes, correct, and that's, that's valid, and we want them to have the ability to voice their concerns.
But I, I think allowing this at any of those locations you saw on the map, I think is wrong, that's all.
Is it because of what we are trying to do, or is it?
No, it's because of, no matter what the security, the potential that's there.
Councilmember Satell, again, it's not about location.
Okay, I know, it's about all the loca-, it's about all the potential locations.
Yeah, and the thing is, we have to, if this is allowed, we come to you in another meeting to request the special use.
That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Norris?
Yes, sir, I, I just want to verify, you said there is another business in that building?
There, there is a medical.
So, there's a medical building, I mean, a medical facility in the same building with marijuana plants?
Correct.
Growing. So, is it surgical, or, I mean, I mean, I guess it's another, but you're not taking the whole building now?
No, we're not, we're just taking one, one section of it.
That's all I need, you just kept, thank you.
Any other comments, questions from council?
And I do want to let you know, this was the last agenda item before late, late mayor Terry Briggs passed away, and he helped us out tremendously navigating this process, and he was a fighter for, for us, and wanted this to, to pass. But, obviously, with the situation that has arisen, it's, it's something that we want to be able to work with you guys on, but at this point, we need your help to have the ability to even present a special use to you guys. So, you're not going to get another, another person in here with a wholesale license, more than likely not going to have a dispensary location in the city of Bridgeton, it might be in another part of the congressional district, but you're not going to have another wholesale license in the city of Bridgeton. Please, any questions?
Any more from council? Thank you, I'm, at this point, I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to come and speak in favor.
From Alabama?
Mrs. Blain, please.
I would just like to say, I've done a little bit of research on this, and I think there's a couple of points that I think the council should actually know. First of all, these micro-businesses are awarded to specific minority or underprivileged people to try to develop and grow minority businesses. It is a limited process throughout the state of Missouri, where you have to apply with a specific location. This applicant had no guidance from the city of Bridgeton when it was trying to apply for its license with the state, because the zoning ordinances did not include anything about micro-businesses. So, how they were supposed to know where to land, I don't know how they were supposed to know that before there was actually code to tell them. I think it's a little unfair to penalize them for that, I guess, is what I'm saying. Also, to know that, the, what he was trying to say about the limitation of how many of these businesses there can be, there will only be awarded a, a limited amount of these micro-businesses throughout the different congressional districts in the state of Missouri. Right now, you can only have two in each district, and it's going to grow over the years, and so what he was trying to say, that the likelihood of another one landing in Bridgeton is probably not going to happen, the congressional district is pretty large, and there's a big area for which they can go and land their spot. So, I would be in favor of this, at least giving them an opportunity to apply for a special use permit. This is not a permitted use, this is to allow for a special use permit, and the applicant would have to come back through, go back through planning and zoning, come back in front of the council, and get that special use permit. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Anybody want to speak against?
I can't really make it to the microphone right now, can you all hear me? No, no, no.
Do we have a portable mic?
We need you to come up to the microphone.
Hi, everyone, being a resident, and having facilities which could bring dangerous.
We need you to state your name and address.
I cannot, due to past stalkers I've had, so you guys know who I am. I'm Teresa. You can write down my address later. Residents will be put more into danger if we have these kind of facilities around, and residents don't need any more danger around here, and so I don't, I don't believe this should be brought.
Can you speak up, please? Push it to the mic.
Residents, can we hear me now? Do not need any more danger in our area, and these facilities can bring more danger, as he said, 24-hour security, and also people on drugs can do things that are not appropriate. So, I am definitely opposed to doing this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else speaking against? This public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda, J, we have no permits waivers or appeal requests, so we'll move on, no emergency legislation, we'll move on to perfection of bills. L, it's table tonight, bill number 6410, we'll move on to agenda item M, consideration of new bills, bill number 6430, councilmember Heine. An ordinance of the city council, like to, like to make a motion for first reading of bill number 6430?
Second. Second?
Yeah, second.
Motion's made by councilmember Heine, seconded by councilmember Luther. For bill number 6430, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any names? Thank you. Bill number 6430, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application 24PZ dash 02, amending the Bridgeton Code of Ordinances, section 410 dot 130 dot D dot two, to allow micro-business wholesale facility as a permitted land use with a special use permit in the B two Community Business District. Like to move, make a motion to move bill number 6430 to table?
Second.
Motion's made to table, bill number 6430, by councilmember Heine, seconded by councilmember Luther. Bill number 6430 is table. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any names? Bill number 6430 is table. Next item, bill number 6431, councilmember Norris.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill number 6431.
Second.
Bill number 6431, motion made by councilmember Norris, seconded by councilmember Hood. Proceed, councilmember Norris. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any names? Proceed, councilmember Norris.
Thank you. An ordinance of the city council, of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the acting mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached heretofore, with commission on accreditation for law enforcement agencies, acumen, acumen as callia, in the amount of $11,450 for the first three years of the self-assess period. Move to table.
Motion's made to table, bill number 6431, by Mrs. Norris, seconded by councilmember Hood, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Bill number, any names? Bill number 6431, table. Next item, discussion items, we have none. Next item is O, the attorney's report?
Nothing to report, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loonbrooker. Agenda item P, council communications, I'll start with councilmember Hood this evening.
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hood. Councilmember Norris?
I always, I have something, thank you, sir. I do want to thank you all. I did want to question Robert, and he's going to give a report, please, on the Harmon Estates, the roadwork there, so I'd like to hear how that, the progress of that. And I just want to thank to all the committee for that charter change, for hosting a town hall meeting, it was well-attended by our residents, an educated and informed voter is the best voter. It is just a reminder, election day is April the 2nd, 2024, many issues, and elected officials, multiple agencies are on the ballot, so please get out and vote. And also, it is reminder, the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast is this Sunday, March 24th, at the Bridgeton Recreation Center, 7:30 to 12:30, $10 for adults, and $5 from five to 12 children, and under four are free. It is one of our largest fundraiser for the Kiwanis, who does, we do a lot of good to, for the seniors, and for the children of Maryland Heights and Bridgeton. And I also want to thank again to the staff during this difficult time, our city is grateful for your devotion. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor Heine. The, I wanted to just comment on a few things, one is that Mayor Heine and I attended the Just Moms Meeting to talk about the RICA Act, it's actually set to expire in 2024, this July, that's Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, so there is renewed effort to continue that. We have a number of elected officials here in Missouri that are leading that charge. That was a great meeting, there were a lot of elected officials there, some folks out here that attended, so, and it's just amazing that this group of women has come this far, and it, it looks very promising for them, and hopefully, for the residents, there's some remediation for residents, those that have passed, actually, and their families, and those that are still alive that have been affected by this, but just tremendous effort, and very interesting, and getting very exciting, I think, for the group, finally. Well, they've had a lot of wins, but this would be a big one. The, I attended the parks board meeting, commission meeting, last night, at the request of councilmember Patel, and I just want to say a couple of things, one is that, in my line of work, I'm a professional grant writer, so I am, I have been told by others outside of this community, and I see it myself, the level of grants that come into the city of Bridgeton, and other areas, but certainly parks, is extraordinary. It's work to put them in, it's work to report on them, but it gives us that boost, so it takes our dollars, our, let's say we've got $5,000, now we have $10,000, and we get to do the thing we really want to do for our residents, so hats off, because it's not easy, and the success rate, you don't always win them, do you? But you go after them, so that's something that not every city does, and it's, it's worth a shout-out. And I happen to have heard that you're celebrating your fifth anniversary here in Bridgeton, maybe? Okay, congratulations. I, I promised Vicky I would say that tonight, so you can ask, you can talk to her about that. And then a real quick update on the code, code ordinance violation enforcement committee, our next meeting will be May 1st, and there's a lot going on in the next few weeks, so we'll have a meeting then. We are still planning to have a public meeting of some type, got some ideas of how that might morph a little bit into incorporating other voices and other thoughts. I want to thank Officer Clay for all of his hard work, it's evident in the reports that we receive, much appreciated, and I, I am hoping for good weather for our upcoming election day, is that it?
Thank you. Councilmember Grummer?
Thank you, Chairman Heine. Couple of things, here at last night's D and R meeting, design and review, excuse me, we did two sign approvals, so there was a, an approval on a poll, poll sign revision, and there was an approval on a new home plan. Excuse me. Secondly, let's see, recall that we had requested EPA do a test at a random location upon the, kind of the replacement of the Spanish Village playground equipment, they consented to do that soil sampling test, and I got a letter back the other day, saying that, in quote, all the, they had found basically nothing, everything was, quote, "within the range of normal background for the greater St. Louis area and the state of Missouri." Of course, that letter took seven or eight pages of charts and graphs and everything to explain why they said that, but essentially, everything is good. I would like to echo some comments made earlier about the charter commission, I can't say enough about what these ladies have done so far, their literature, they put out, their organization, the way that meeting was conducted last night, it's just first-class, and it, it's one of the better, it's one of the better, if not the best promotional activity I've seen here in the city, so my compliments to those ladies behind this urgency, behind getting these charter amendments passed, I think they're doing a terrific job. And finally, I would like to announce again, we will be, we will be having our wards, our combined Ward one and two meeting, right here in this chamber, next Wednesday, beginning at 7 o'clock, in addition to all the normal entertaining value and information, the mayoral candidates have both agreed to a short presentation, this is a, although it's a Ward one and two meeting, it is open to the public, so if anybody would like to hear the mayoral candidates present, we'd certainly like to have them here, so, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Satell?
Yes, thank you, well, I'll, I'll did it what Jerry said, I'm glad we merged our two meetings together, and that both of candidates are willing to come there and speak to the citizens, hopefully from all four wards, from different sections, and I think we don't need a debate or nothing like that, since we are, you're already councilmembers, so I think that's going to be very positive. Monday night, I was kind of in charge a little bit with the, the charter signs for Ward one, so it was kind of nice, some of my citizens liked it, I was putting the signs out, I think I was like, picked them all back, about 18 of them, took them back over to Nancy Lapia, so it was kind of nice to, to do that, and, and, and help the citizens, they realize, no matter whether you're for an item or against an item, I think that the citizens like that, you want to hear from the citizens, and make sure that they, they get, they get heard, whether it's at our meetings, or at the polls. With that said, after going to that meeting Monday night, my wife and I, we went and voted today, so if you get a chance to go ahead and go over to, you know, the government center over there at Northwest Plaza, go ahead and vote early, you know, I mean, it could be a lousy rainy day, we don't know, but the day wasn't too bad to go vote early. I came in today also, and reported a couple items to the Public Works Department, including a pothole that's right there, that's pretty bad, at Limburg, turning right-hand, right through to Old St. Charles, by, by the, by the spot shell, and I think when I came here, I think it was already potted and filled in and fixed, so Robert, thank you very much, if you did that in just a couple hours, very good, thank you very much, that's all.
Councilmember Westy?
I'll try and keep mine pretty short. Ended up last week going to the event the fire department put on at the community center for new parents and grandparents, and I thought it was a really good event, I know my parents were all there, and they got a lot out of it, so that's great, they're actually watching the little one tonight, and hopefully they can, they won't have to put those skills to the test, but I'm glad to know they were trained by somebody other than myself and my wife on what to do, so that's always cool. Also, ended up, I was a little bit late, but I ended up going to the meeting, going over the charter amendments, and I thought that was a great presentation they put on, and I was happy to hear that both sides were able to kind of talk at the end of it, to, in the questioning phase, so, thank you for putting that on, I know that I heard from multiple residents when I was campaigning last election, that there was a lot of confusion about those, and hopefully, that meeting will help resolve some of the confusion, and let people make a informed choice on yes or no, instead of just saying no because they didn't understand something. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff reports, I'll start with Mr. Gunn, Public Works.
All right, tomorrow's our last concrete pour for the road replacement project with MNH, they'll be finished with paving tomorrow, but we still have 11 handicap ramps to replace, so that will take place. Unfortunately, I think rain's going to get us on Friday, so they'll finish that up probably early next week. And then, the other thing we talked about at the last meeting was some work by the water company. We've been talking with them pretty much daily over the last two weeks, and right now, the project's on hold, pending review of their engineers. Basically, they farmed this project out to a consultant, and I think the consultant was running with it, and they might have left out some details as far as where that pipe was going to go, so we're back to trying to get that pipe underneath a sidewalk versus going right down the middle of the roads. down the middle of the roads. So more to follow on that. So right now, we're things on hold. They did say that if the project does go forward in some fashion, they will provide us a letter that I'll, I'll put out to council before it gets mailed out.
Thank you.
Uh, pending your questions?
Councilmember Westy?
I know one of the things we discussed last council meeting was the thickness of the concrete pour. Have there been any more discussion about that? Are they starting to come more to our side, hopefully, to say that they're not going to give us an inferior product if it does have to happen?
They're not going to say one way or another right now because they're still in the redesign phase or really kind of the overview of looking through what the consultant has given them. Basically, what we did is Public Works, we had staff take our GIS system and then took the plans and overlaid them on top of our GIS system. And then we emailed them plans and said, hey, look, I think there's a small problem with this. I don't think you're getting the full picture here from your consultant. And that's when they said, okay, you're probably right, let's take a look at it. And that's when they put everything on hold.
Thank you.
Any other council members? I, I have a question. Can you give us a, a quick update on the end of Cypress Road there, the north end, on any paving plans?
Yeah. We looked at a couple of different options. The city does own that part of it. That was part of a decision that administration made and the council made several years ago and we took over Natural Bridge. So we have 130 feet from that intersection on Cypress and Natural Bridge that we're responsible for maintenance. It's in kind of bad shape. So right now, we looked at either putting it back in concrete or putting another asphalt overlay on it. It just so happened that, starting sometime the first or second week in April, MODAT's going to do some bridge work of an overpass next to the Renaissance Hotel. So when they take that bridge out of commission for all summer, they're going to be routing all of their traffic down in front of the airport and then they cut across Cypress Road to get back on the highway. Because of that detour, that road isn't the best of shape right now. So they pretty much agreed with us that they are going to be responsible since we just found out about this when we were asking them about traffic control and a few other things. They said, oh yeah, by the way, we're going to use part of your road to detour for our project. And timeout, that's not really fair in that sense. You can't do an ups like that. So they're going to go ahead and repave that section. The city would just pay for the unit prices from their contractor that they're using the overlay 270s. We're getting a great price on it. I wish I could take that price and do a few other streets in Bridgeton, but we're getting a very, very good price from their contractor to redo our part of that, that area.
Very good. Anybody else? Thank you. Mr. Gunn? We have tonight with us Captain Wooten. Chief Masadi is out of town, so Captain Wooten is filling in.
Do I have to use this? Couple of things to report in reference to the 6430 bill that was tabled in reference to Kalia. It's simply a commission for creating national standards that police officers and police departments abide by. We are currently accredited through Kalia and this will just increase from 108 to 110 standards, all the way up to about 458 standards. It's basically a checklist to make sure what we're doing is correct. And when they find, you can fine tune some policies or some things that you need to do, then that's what you do and then you go through a three-year process. Everyone wants to know where the money's coming from and due to our excellent work by our task force officer who were named nameless, this will be coming from asset forfeiture. So that's his, that's his plan. You want to know a few police departments that are currently Kalia? Maryland Heights, St. Anne, Hazelwood, Florissant, Creve Court, Chesterfield, St. Louis County, St. Louis Metro PD, and our St. Louis County Police Communications and Dispatch Unit is also Kalia certified. So he wanted to let you know that. That's it. Any questions?
Councilmember Hood?
Steve, is this part of the cooperative agreement between state of Missouri accreditation and Kalia?
Yes, our, our plan is, his plan is that he is going to do both of them. He is going to do Kalia as well as the Missouri Police Chiefs Association and they'll do a collaborative effort.
Yeah, that, that's been talked about for some time and it took quite a bit of work to get Kalia to accept the accreditation from the state of Missouri. And we're going, still going to have to comply with the additional steps for Kalia, correct?
Yeah, yes. We will go through Kalia for, Kalia as we're going through, and we are in communication with Chief Ideman that runs the Missouri Police Chiefs portion, and he's guiding us through as we're doing Kalia, then it will kind of mirror the Missouri Police Chiefs. And then our goal is to have them both at the same time.
That's a, that's a tremendous accomplishment. Congratulations.
Well, it's, it's a, it's going to be a three-year process and someone's got a lot of work.
We got faith in you.
So, anything else?
Councilmember Luther, here's a question.
Yes, so this sounds great. So that, what I was questioning is the 11,450 for the first three years of self-assessment. Is that to get into the program? Is that for a consultant to help with that? I was just curious if, if that's a fee?
No, that's, that's, that's the fee part of the agreement for the three years. And then what will end up happening is, is towards the end of the, of the, in two and a half years, approximately, they will send a team out.
Right.
Okay? But it used to be all paper files. I'm, I had living here a little bit and I'm sorry for time, but I did it all, when, when Chief Hood was the chief, we did it all by paper because that's all we knew. That's all the systems were. Now it's all electronic and we can quickly do a proof. And a, a proof might be a policy on use of force. And then we are a pursuit and then we indicate a pursuit that we had and then we turned it off or we cut it off because it went outside the city. And then that would be a proof that we are acting properly within the confines of the policy.
Thank you for giving that example. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Would, would you be able to give us an update on the new speed readers?
Sure. The new speed readers have been posted. One of them is on westbound Old St. Charles between Taylor and Harmon Estates. The other one is southbound Magella near the top of the hill, the best, the best of Muro and Dominico, right in that area. Another one, northbound Fifi near Sutter Church between Old St. Charles and Whitehall. And the other one, westbound Avery between Fifi and Benedetta. Those are all battery operated. We don't need, we don't need sunlight to run them. We have batteries in the, we have a series of officers that will rotate those batteries as needed. And if you get any questions or complaint that it is too bright at night, you please let us know and we have the system that we have purchased. We can dim that if that's necessary or even turn it off at a certain time. I will tell you this, when it is turned off, if you don't see those lights working, it's still recording the data. And that's our plan is to record the data, try to get an idea of when and then increase our enforcement action on that.
Very good. There's two more lights. Councilmember Satell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hine. Yeah, I did notice some, working on the one on Fifi Road there at Sutter Church, it's like, you know, maybe 300 feet from my driveway. It works fantastic. It's really, really accurate because you can match it to other vehicles right there as I get ready to pull in the driveway or something like that. My citizens don't complain about it on that whole area right there. They like that it's there. I think it's the right, the right density of light. I know when it first got turned on, it just showed two dash lines for a while and maybe it has to monitor or something, but at least there was a battery, I guess, to make those two light lines. Are there things that we need to watch out for or is that, is that what would show up when, when the battery goes dead or something like that? Because they did tell me it was going to be battery operated.
I would only suggest you watch your speed.
No, I'm, I'm saying, you know, to, to reflect the speed. I mean, even when you're, it says 30 miles an hour and it goes to 29 or 30, but I mean, I think that's kind of funny though.
No, no, you don't, you, you, don't you worry about that sign. That, that's, they, they, I have, they have a system set up. We have a system set up where there's an officer on each shift that has a key that can get in, that can rotate those batteries. If they go down, they'll, they'll go down for a, a 12-hour period, eight, eight-hour period, and then they'll be back working.
Okay, okay, good. I just was wondering on that, since it was a solar thing on there, you know, how, how would you know, you know, if it's still working or is there a process to turn it, just like we turn it in for a pothole? Okay, this, this isn't working right. But it, it looks like it's, it's really accurate. So that's what I like about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Luther?
Yeah, just real quick, we had a quick conversation here when you were putting some of those up. There was at least two, one in Ward Three along Avery, and I know that someone had complained about the location on social media and you got wind of it and you realized that you, you needed to relocate it. So you did that quickly and much appreciated for that. The moral of the story, I think we both agree, is if you've got a concern, call, call the police. Call us. Yeah.
I accept that responsibility. I had poor communication with, with Mr. Gunn's team, so it, it, that's on me, you know. I, I put it, we put it in the wrong spot. We now moved it on property line. We're fine.
But thanks for doing that quickly. But again, call someone directly. Social media is fun, I guess, sometimes, but it, it gets fixed a lot quicker if you call the right person. So thanks for that.
Sure.
That's it.
One more thing, Captain Wooten. My girlfriend Sally was involved in an accident on McKelvey Road on Sunday pulling out of the parking lot of my office. She was T-boned, but we wanted to have you give Officer Stone our, our thanks and compliments on the way he handled the situation there. Very professional and helped her through the whole process. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass it on.
Mr. Brennan, Kane?
We had a break-in at the Page Entry House on Monday night. Thankfully, the police responded quickly and arrested the three perpetrators. The door was slightly damaged where they kicked it in. It's already been repaired, so we're thankful that there was no other, no other damage. So pretty fortunate. Seniors are having their monthly luncheon tomorrow. 65 seniors are registered. And the breakfast with the Easter Bunny is this Saturday at the rec center, 9:30 to 11 a.m. There's 75 family members enrolled, all kinds of fun, you know, photo ops and games and good food from Cracker Barrel. Registration ends at tomorrow at 10 a.m. if anybody wants to get in late.
Any questions from council? Mr. Bookout?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Mayor? Okay, thank you. Thanks, audience, for being here and taking an interest in your local government. Congratulations again to Mrs. Lapia. Glad to see you back on a board or commission. And I want to wish everybody that has an opponent and the election's coming up on April 2nd, good luck. And thank you, Officer Swope, for being with us tonight. Also appreciate that. And with that, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Hood, seconded by Councilmember Luther?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? We're adjourned. Thank you.